Ready?
Yeah, ready.
Okay. All right, welcome everybody to the 2025 budget hearings. So we need roll call?
No, it's a work session.
Okay, so work session.
Yeah, but I would just request, we have representatives from the Marshall County Council on Aging.
Okay.
Here and they're making a request for their annual support. So if we could let them go ahead and go.
Yeah, so let's let them do that.
Well, as she mentioned, we're here to work to request for funding. I don't know if you understand everything we do. I think we explain it each year. And she might have been in the letter too, but basically all types of services for this, for the seniors, including bus trips several times a year. We provide transportation for medical purposes. They're free of charge. We provide a taxi service. I think we come to Culver once a week. Used to. Then we charge $250 a stop. Is that right? And all kinds of weekly activities. There's exercise four times a week. There are crafts on Mondays. There are all kinds of different activities for seniors. It's really a worthwhile organization and we'd appreciate your support. Did Karen send a letter?
Yes, she did send a letter and I failed to send it out. So that's on me. I apologize, but I knew you were coming at some point. So I'm gonna just go ahead and print out a copy for my records, but I'll forward it to the council.
I don't know if you have it handy that you can read.
I do.
Can you read it?
Sure. It is opens.
You might have covered something that I didn't.
Russ, is the request for the same amount or do you need an increase?
As much as you can do this.
Okay.
Sir.
Here's her letter. It's addressed to me. Marshall County Council on Aging would like to again thank you and the town, the Culver Town Council for your continued support of our transportation program. I hope that we can continue and expand our partnership to offer more availability and options to the residents of Culver. We once again hit a new record of trips in 2023, both countywide and for Culver residents. Our total trips were 29,195, including 1,047 for 58 unduplicated Culver residents. Our projected total countywide transportation budget for 2025 is 609,907, with Indot funding half of net expenses, leaving our portion at approximately 276,954. Your annual support of 5,000 helps us meet the dollar-for-dollar match required by Indot. Having a public transportation option available in Culver certainly adds to the wonderful amenities that Culver already has, as well as provide access to those amenities for those who, for one reason or another, cannot drive. Our goal is to meet the transportation needs of all Marshall County residents by continually striving to increase our efficiency and availability. I hope we can once again count on the support of the town of Culver as well as, as well as all of our Marshall County communities. I've been more than happy to meet with the town council to further discuss how your contributions are used, our planned improvements or any changes, increases in services that Culver may want to pursue in the future. Thank you for your consideration. Janice Jeffers Holliday.
This is the one organization I've received emails from people about how important it is to them. I've had people approach me once at Lions Club, once in a restaurant about the service itself. So I would not be opposed to increasing the amount. I don't recall what fund we took it out of.
We take it out of the Riverboat. And I don't have the projected incomes for Riverboat yet. It had been decreasing for some time due to COVID. I suspect that it's probably back on the rise. And I feel like at the time it was around $6,000, $67,000. But that's, yeah, seven, in 2020, we received $8,843.
Okay.
And out of that fund, we contribute to CBGC, the Marshall County Council on Aging and the Late Gage.
Okay.
So right now, it would be a total of approximately $8,900 that we are
receiving?
That we're, we're giving from that account.
Okay.
And we received $884,368 in 2023. And again, I don't know what that's.
Kind of close total.
And it's not something, I mean, it's something for you to consider. And by the time we get to the final budget, then we can give them the specific numbers, but do you have their opportunity to come and present to you? Get your questions answered and then make decisions.
To make for the final.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to make the decision. Okay.
Russ, are some of those services, like you say, exercise and other?
Call free, they play cards.
Is it in Plymouth?
It's at the senior center. I watered a couple there. They play, they all kinds of crafts.
Okay.
It's on Harrison Street, just
All kinds of cards.
East of Culver.
Yeah.
Also the umbrella agency for Meals on Wheels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, tax preparation. There are probably 20 or more different.
Yeah.
Deals and browsing.
Is Meals on Wheels still active in Culver?
Sure. Meals on Wheels, is it still active?
Yep.
It's, it went down for a while.
Yeah, during COVID, it kind of died off and we've been trying to get it going. I'm not sure exactly how many on.
You mean Culver, there's quite a few in Plymouth.
Oh, yeah. But prior to COVID, I know there were 13 and last I heard there, I don't know, three or five somewhere.
Yeah.
It's kind of best kept secret of all the different things that they're even the transportation, realize it's among my friends that say, you know, you can get a ride. You know, you know, to the doctor or something, if you're probably widows and so forth and
Yeah.
It's really a great service. Transportation is the biggest item, but
Yeah.
I would point out that all the other towns, with the exception of Remo, who I guess don't think they're part of Marshall County, but
He even had a board member on with him once. He could never get to anything else.
Well, I remember, I think the first year the calls were like 200 or 300 and it's just gone up every year of the transportation calls. I mean, the fact that it's over 1,000 now, that's, you know, if we contribute 5,000 or 7,000 or 8,000 or whatever it is, it's really us saying, okay, here's $5 per call if it's 1,000 calls. But I remember when it was 300 and some calls, so it's really gone up a lot.
Yeah.
So clearly there's a need.
Something else I just thought of, there's so many different things. Twice, every, every Wednesday, every Wednesday, veterans officer is at the, they're from noon to three for any veteran that wants to come in and get some questions answered or something.
They have a lawyer there periodically.
Yeah, attorneys, if an attorney comes and provides legal service, I don't know how many times a month that happens. This just goes on and on. It's great.
Yeah. Speakers that come in there.
They got, now they got a master garden in class going and then they got a big garden there.
And gets a
I have a brown thumb, so I don't participate.
Yeah. My mom had plants galore and I've killed them all.
Well, Rita's landscaping looks nice. I've seen her out there working on it.
I don't do much anymore.
They also sponsor Senior Expo and have a number of trips for mostly senior citizens free a year, I think, something like that.
Yeah, those aren't free. You have to pay to go on those. But, you know, it gets you, gets you a chance to go out and see the country.
Put it up in baseball.
Yeah.
Living gardens, different things like that.
Yeah.
I see where they requested five grand last year and they haven't, it has not been paid yet this year.
There's a check in the claims tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate.
Read.
Does she see those letters? She is on it.
Well, I concur with Jenny. I think it's most worthwhile. Secondly, unfortunately, our population isn't getting any younger than the town.
Wait till we build up our units, we'll get on.
But I, I would support an increase.
Yeah. Well, once we figure out the budget and where the money comes out of and what, all that, I guess, it sounds like we all kind of seem to have a consensus.
Dan, what's your thoughts?
How's that?
I think we ought to put a figure in there now though, so that we when it comes time to set on the final budget, you know, we know what
To see what we can.
The total hit's gonna be. So.
I'll go with 6,500.
I'm okay waiting until we get through all the departments.
Yeah, I mean
I'm open to
Just to put a number in.
I'm open to
Yeah.
I definitely feel comfortable with that minimum of 5,000, but I'm comfortable with going higher to you.
Yeah.
I can go with the 6,500 and, you know, put it in there and see where we
Put it in there, see where it washes out.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thanks for coming in.
Unlike other citizens who wants to have their peace, but they, we're gonna stay.
Well, you can stay or you
If I know you all were staying and gonna be here, I would have baked something for you.
While we're at it, Bob's enjoying the air.
Is it coming right at you?
So I received a request from Brian Carver of the Culver Youth Club and they're requesting $2,500 again this year in 2025. So, and that comes out of Riverboat as well. So is that?
I can agree with that.
I work on their auctions, so I prefer not to comment.
Well, I think three out of the five of you have some sort of
Yeah.
Some sort of tag. Bill's not on the board anymore.
I'm fine with that.
Us two are definitely too involved to comment.
Well, do we leave, are you, the three of you, 2,500?
I'm fine with that.
Fine with that.
Okay. And then just to finish out the Riverboat, we do partner with the Culver Academies and Lake Max and Lucky Environmental Fund to pay for the late gauge and we, in the past, I think it was $1,333, that price went up. And so a third of our share would be $1,400 and that's remains the same from last year. So if that's okay, we'll
It's fine.
Yeah, okay. So
And that's a yearly thing.
That's, yeah, it's an annual thing.
For upkeep and keeping the record.
And when do we pay that? When do we pay that?
I have a bill on my desk that's due in September, so I need to collect some money first before I pay it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we got the, well, we also have the Kimmel Capital Development Fund to go over, which is basically the sidewalk program. And then I've got a couple of other things coming out of that, but if we want to go ahead and take care of Bob and Wayne, first, we can then go back to the first funded and I can finish up the CCV. So I don't want to go ahead and from the thing that they need to do unless they don't want it.
Did they draw straws to see who goes first?
If there were no, no straws drawn, but I know Bob's opt, technically opt of black wings. You want Bob to go first? That we can start?
Maybe try on the phone.
Okay.
We do have a packet. It has all of the, all the budgets in there, so if we hold on to that for tomorrow night as well. Much appreciated and truly thank you.
Any huge surprises? Values and longevity benefits. Repair and maintenance, that's always a interesting thought. The town is a center. Insurance went up, water sewer was going up just because of possible free increase. Resurfacing and asphalt. I'd like to get an opinion from you guys while you're all in the room. We either need to pave or do the full project that we engineered for lake shore drive between the liquor store and Culver Lake. Do we, in the spring, apply for a CCMG grant and do the whole thing or do I just pave that road? Do you want the curve widened? We took it out to bid once, it came in way over budget. It came in at 1.2. You get CCMG funds, you only come up with 25% of that. So if we encumber a little bit from this year plus next year's, we should be able to take on that complete project. Can citizens speak?
Are prices up and down, up or down right now?
I don't know that. Go out, paving, straight paving is down.
Okay.
What we historically, but as far as the pipe work, because it's warm water, we're gonna bring storm up there to get rid of that pond. We'll put herbs on the outside. There's a sanitary sewer in there to get smoothed back and upgraded.
So that's your big expense.
So the underground stuff is a big expense. Plus it's gonna get wider, probably five feet. I don't remember exact numbers, but at one time it was talk about putting a golf cart pad or something in there. You're not gonna do any of that. In, just gonna make a street. In the conceptual drawing, they put a 10-foot white path. Just a stripe on the road, not a path on side of the road, just a stripe. And that is something you guys can add or delete. I would probably delete it, move the center line over that extra bit.
Yeah, I think if we keep it in there, it might encourage golf carts to head toward 10, which they're not supposed to do.
There's a sidewalk already on the west side.
Yeah.
We won't be doing a sidewalk on the east side, just the curb.
Yeah.
And resurface reshaping it to get the crown moved over with the
Yeah.
I would say that, you know, if we could apply for a grant, that would be good.
You can, I think you're planning on going for CCMG on it, right?
For sure.
Yeah.
Last time it came in at 1.2, so we're
But you're talking the match would be partially this year, partially next year.
Take whatever balance we got left, encumber it for that project.
Yeah.
Been laying on top of next year's budget, we should be cool though.
Yeah. And what's great about the CCMG, you'd have your, your construction costs in to be able to encumber it, that you'd have a PO essentially.
I'd have to get ahold of them and have a cost estimate for the application.
Yep.
We'll know more of that, but
Okay.
It's already engineered. The big piece is already
Yeah.
Done. We just need
We already paid for that.
Updated. It's, it's a shovel ready project.
Yeah, I remember we put it out to bid twice and
Time.
Came back atrocious.
Well, it came back with one company that didn't. If they got it, they were gonna get it.
Yeah.
I know some bids in a couple counties were in, some of the paving has come way down since that last round or two, three rounds ago, rather.
Clinton Brown's really hungry.
They go for the bid.
Right.
Yeah. I, I like your plan to try to use remaining funds from this year and encumber it into your next year plan and going after the CCMG dollars, because then you've got your match. Because you, we wouldn't go to construction until January or, well, next year technically.
Well, I would apply in round one of '26 or '25, sorry, '25.
And not fall
And we, we wouldn't even get an answer until
Yep, summer.
Midsummer, late summer.
Yeah.
So it will be, if construction at all, it will be late next year. That road is falling apart. It needs
Yeah.
If you guys don't want to, not want to, but if you guys don't want to go down that road of that expense, I'm gonna just pave it.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna take care of the issues, we take care of them before paving, right?
Recommend, let's do it right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Makes sense.
I agree with that.
But last time it came in, there was several citizens, non-citizens.
I remember the non-citizens specifically.
You're still We're gonna bring the golf cart again.
No.
No.
What, anybody be against making these?
Especially if they don't live in the town limits. That's the guy who was yelling at it.
I know, I just wanted to warn you. Bring that up.
He came by, yelled at Julie, yelled at me. We sent him to Bob.
Yeah.
Turns out he does a lot better talking to Bob than women.
You gotta calm him down. You guys are all bored, that's what we do. I'm giving a big cost estimate.
Sounds like a good plan.
So that's your, part of your resurfacing budget?
Part of the increase.
Okay.
Let's hear it here.
I'd like to say one quick thing about street department. They do a phenomenal job. And the way, fast as they pick up twigs and bread, this is unbelievable. And everything they do, so I
Did it last?
I'm not bringing her to these meetings.
So positive.
We're here to complain.
No. We want Rita to take the front row.
I can see Bob's hips getting
No, it's not.
Bigger, bigger.
It takes a lot. How much that cost you, Bob? How many ass hits does it take to get over one?
He saw Rita walk in the room and pulled his wallet out.
Bob, what are your other supplies? You've got to increase in other supplies, but
That's an annual question. It's basically any, anything that we buy. There's a nut, a bolt.
Okay.
A tube of grease that goes in there.
Okay.
Some gears that's way out of whack.
I just want to remind you too, as we're looking at these budgets, especially for you Dana, this is a permission spent. This doesn't mean that all of this money is gonna be spent. But this is an opportunity for the department heads to be transparent, to present to you all and also to the public, saying, this is where the money's going that we collect. And then we have this permission to spend. Most years, we don't spend all of it. And if we're gonna go over, we have to go through an additional process to request those funds. So I just want to make you all aware of it, that, you know, we don't have to get like way down into the weeds of, of each specific line item. Because usually I tell the department heads, as long as you don't go, go over that bottom total, I can fix it. I mean, I can move money around and, and we have some flexibility there, but
Yeah.
My biggest thing is just don't, don't go over that bottom line. And we have very responsible department heads. And most times they don't. If they do, they're coming to me and saying, hey, we have this purchase or this, or, you know, there's an emergency or something.
Then the unspent, this goes in reserve account or?
The unspent just goes back into the general account. In the last couple of years, we've been putting money back into the general account. Because I'll also tell you on the income, basically what I do is I underestimate the income and overestimate the expenses. And hopefully we end up meeting somewhere in the middle. And also on the income, one thing to consider is we, I'm still waiting for some estimates on incomes, like the local income tax, those estimates will be out to August 15th. So I put in last year's number. I know it's gonna be over that, but, you know, it's at least a starting point. And again, I would rather, I would rather underestimate and be able to put money back in the general fund than overestimate and have an oh shoot moment. And, you know, we, we spent money on stuff that maybe we didn't need to and now we have to dig into reserves. So, and a lot of those reserves that we have are for, you know, we're kind of saving up for those bigger purchases, like the fire truck that we just committed to. You know, Wayne's gonna need some squad cars. We're gonna get a new street sweeper, so some of that at least purchase amount, that 30,000 is gonna go towards at least a street sweeper. We're gonna be looking at a new ambulance pretty soon. So there's a lot of big ticket items that we have to kind of put money away for that aren't necessarily labeled that, but I know I have it in, in that pot.
And that's why it helps when you do the monthly's and give us the budget versus the actual and tells us what percentage we've spent year to date. And that way you can project it out. And that really does help. Something you've done.
Hey Bob, do you have the repair line item high enough? I know in '23, we came out okay, but we're, we've obviously had to spend this year.
It just depends on, right? It's only what breaks. Right now, we're repairs and other supplies that
They're, they're the moving target that you just
Yeah. I honestly feel like we should up his repair line item. Because we're currently overspent on it in June. You know, you do have some aging equipment. In other cases, you have, you know, a new snow pile or whatever, that's not as aged, but I'm, it's so interesting to see that we had to up gas because at one point it got lower and now it's higher and
You don't think 2,000?
The 20,000?
For the repair and maintenance?
Well, it looks like we've had
She's down.
I'm on
There, 20,000.
I'm on regular repairs.
Yeah.
Where we, we're
No, I'm back down with you now.
We could be way in the hole again if we
That's why I was asking where you were at. Sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, I'm wondering, because it might be just like
I was sitting here trying to think, but I know
We had tires.
Well, that's a different, that's a different line.
Okay.
We had your Dodge that went up. It's a couple thousand.
We had some stuff on the street sweeper we had to repair on the hydraulics and stuff.
Another moving target. Yeah, there's your tires up there on supply.
Or maybe it's more we add to quote equipment, knowing we might not want to keep repairing something and buy something new.
56,775 for seniors.
That was a lot of concrete, remember?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's what
We just used that line item because we had, yeah, makes sense. Okay, we're good.
I know.
Well, that's what I saw that I saw that number. I was like, well, that line item is really hurting.
Yeah, and if you remember when, when you all approved that expense, I told you that we're gonna go ahead and, and take it out of street department. And then at the end of the year, we might need to go back for an additional coverage because we may not have enough in his budget to, to cover it.
Yeah.
So just
Yeah, the other line item doesn't make up for that one. I get it. Okay. 20,000 it is, Bob. I feel like Bob should have a line item that just says bucket and
Jump drawer.
I mean, it could just be the whole budget. I mean, literally, you could do your budgets that way and just say
Yeah.
You know, this is how much you have and not
Not try and break it down. Add it up and say, there it is.
Exactly, yeah.
But it does make it a little bit easier to comprehend when it's broken out.
And there's usually a question about salaries and why it's a little higher. And I try to budget in overtime. We've been very fortunate the last couple of years with snow events. They've been very minimal. But if we get one year where there's a bunch of snow events on a weekend or overnight, they're pulling a ton of overtime. So I want to be able to account for that and not have to come back at the end of the year and say, well, we're gonna be over and yeah, just have that kind of
I have zero issue with the salary line item here, so yes.
Well, Bob's here, does he have to speak on?
He's got two others that he's responsible He's got two others that he's responsible for, MBH, so local roads and streets, and basically what we're doing is, um. Basically taking the income that we're getting for MBH and local roads and streets and just spending it. So, nothing necessarily over at this point, you know, if something happens with a CCMG and we need to pull a little bit of money, there is. There's money in that account, those, both of those accounts for, for projects, so we can do an additional preparation next year if we need to do that. Um, but looking at it, I think. I need to double check, cause we, we talked with the street sweeper.
Yeah.
And we're gonna finance it, I need to go back and get that paper and make sure I'm, I'm budgeting the correct amount for next year. With the financing.
Yeah, you should be taking delivery on the new sweeper in September.
That's right. What's the BCG for this fall, how much? What's the application for?
One point two. But, I'd advise that, but last time that, they, they decided they wanted to go for the whole project on the short drive.
Yep.
So we're gonna do that, last time we did is one point two. I'll have the engineer update our cost. Estimates.
Yeah.
And then that's what I'll turn in, a little more after that gets updated.
Yep.
Last time it's one point two.
I'm sure it went down.
I'm sure.
What is the difference, um, in local roads and streets, got resurfacing? And then resurfacing also is in your. Request.
It's just, it depends on the funds and the, the funding source. So there's, there's a local roads and streets, there's specific tax money that comes from local roads and streets, I have to keep that separately.
Okay.
So, local roads and streets has one, and that's one resurfacing, there's another funding source from motor vehicle highway. That's, so that has to be in another fund.
Oh, I see.
And then the street department, those funds come out of the general fund.
What if the MBH and street combined at one time? And statutorily you had to.
Well, years ago it was combined, and then they changed the MBH and the funding formula and what you could do with the MBH. Now it's actually, what we have is, we have the MBH and the MBH restricted, so all the MBH funds that I get, I have to split in half. Half of it goes into the MBH, half of it goes into restricted, and the restricted funds are specific things that you can use for. And then most of it's like road maintenance, like road. I don't remember the term for it, the other half of the MBH you could use for salaries and that sort of thing, but it really constricts what you're doing. And at the time, we were significantly funding the MBH with property tax dollars. So, rather than get into all of that restriction and, you know, just having our hands tied and monies in. In a fund where we can only do specific things with it, I pulled the street department out, put it in the general fund, we have a lot more on the leeway. On what we can do, and then we just use the MBH and local roads and streets specifically for resurfacing. The occasional, um, equipment purchase, like I think the, the front loader or the backhoe.
That was the third.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for Bob?
Right. He's on there.
I don't carry my phone around out there, Wayne. Is your. Wonder not, some of the line items, brave, a lot of it's lost. Uh, probably one of the big effects was. This is a rotation and adding its practical cars left here, it kind of blew it off. When we put the car back in, as you can see, that's thirty-eight thousand, well. That's probably about ten to twelve thousand or more, less, I want the car. Yeah, cause that's how much the cars. I did increase the other equipment line item because we're anticipating on purchasing and upgrading equipment next year. So we could be looking, you know, in other words, I'm hoping, if enough left this year, we can buy some, yeah, this year and still have money left here to buy some more.
Some more flash.
Hopefully looking at probably forty-five to seventy thousand dollars worth of equipment. You know, between cameras, takers.
AEDs playing.
AEDs, I mean, there's just a lot of stuff that we need to get moving on to upgrade. I let the sour, alright, cut the salaries as you can see there. Other than that, really, the rest of the line items were up a little bit, based just in simple fact, cost factor of stuff today. Like tires Bob's talking about, you know, I mean, it's just, hey, you just can't go get them cheap no more, you know. You know, state rise. State bid prices for, great. Overall, about forty-two thousand dollars budget, a lot of that's gonna be equipment. Make sure, the overall line items is about ninety-nine hundred dollars.
On your AEDs and cameras and that, does each of the cars have?
That's the point, put one each.
Yeah. So, it's actually to end, to not necessarily upgrade the one you have, but to add one into each car.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And it's coordinated with, um, you've been coordinating with Mike on that, so all AEDs are gonna be.
Right. Right, so it's.
That's the part where I don't know exactly, I'm guesstimating, you know, like that, three thousand, but I don't typically know. Probably talk.
Yeah. Okay.
Got enough in there for firearms?
Yep.
Okay.
This is, oh, never mind, I was looking at twenty-three, not twenty-four, I guess. So, at the end of twenty-twenty-three, you only spent five hundred eighty-one thousand. You came in really under budget, right?
Yeah.
But you think you're gonna. Even if you add in a large amount for equipment. Well, I imagine though, you just end up coming in under again. We have a year like twenty-three.
Hopefully, I'm trying to spend everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause right now, you're through June, you are gonna be higher for this year. If that's an indication, then, yeah.
Except some of that's like adding the car back in, because we did a switch over last year, bought two cars, but then add the equipment. Karen might help explain that, what we transitioned that money, you know, cause some of it's supposed to come from the. The. Oh, one of the reasons we were looking at, it may help contribute to when we bought those cars, but I don't think they ever did, did they? You see it right out of budget.
CRC.
Yeah.
CRC bought one, bought one of the cars, yeah.
Yeah.
So then what car came out of your budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I think a big, a big part of why that year came in low is we budgeted for the full staff and it.
Yeah.
You didn't have a full staff that year, so you're now back to full staff, so it'll, it'll flush out differently at the end of twenty-four.
Like I said, the cars, you know, we've always kept a qualified item, we rotate a car every, every year. We're hopefully gonna get back on that track, but the cost of that car plus following year. Taking, you know, encumbrance like from one year to the next, it pays for the car, the equipment, transferring of everything. Should be enough, I don't cover everything.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Yeah.
Like ours, they just bought a car fifty grand. I mean, it's just, that was a, well, upsetting on the lot, that was. About already.
Well, did you see that they told the county they don't need help with emergency services budget?
Yeah.
Just, you know, they said they had it figured out. They don't need the special tasks, even though they haven't had any.
Yeah.
I'll just mumble my thoughts.
I read most of those.
What?
I read most of them.
All right, questions for Wayne?
No.
Well.
Pretty much makes sense.
So, if we could just go back to the CCD, recover a couple things, and one thing that we're finding is mine. Um, we have, I have fifteen thousand dollars in the CCD's setup, side up program. Um, this year, we were able to fund all the requests I received with a fifteen thousand dollar budgeted for this year, so. Unless somebody feels we should up it, I was just gonna leave it at fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you haven't had more people requesting after, afterwards.
I haven't had anybody since, we, I hit, um, I didn't know. I thought it was gonna be over, and then we kind of did some negotiations with one of the, well, we took a look at one of the properties. And they didn't need the full, um, request.
Yeah.
And so that freed up some money, there was one more request that came in after that and that brought me within like a hundred forty-two dollars of the.
Yeah.
At fifteen, so, so yeah, I haven't really had any since then, um, there have been different people that have asked. Um, there's one gentleman from last year that I thought was gonna put in for this year, and it probably would have taken up majority of, of it in one fell swoop, but.
He planted trees where he's gonna put that, I think that's gonna.
I think we're done with that one then.
I, I'm not saying we're done with it.
Right. So. So we're working, you know, slowly, and it, you know, it just depends on where people are with funds too.
Yeah.
Do, sorry. Um, we did put in, um, the seventy-five thousand again, um. Out of the CCD for the pier socket replacement program to assist that in getting that whole thing done, uh, for the park. And then, um. I think that's it. So at that point, at this point, that's kind of what's coming out of the CCD fund, and that's at a hundred thou, a hundred thousand dollars, I believe. When it's gonna come in, well, I know, um, getting about a hundred and eight thousand. Between the property taxes, between property taxes and the other taxes that go into that account, you know. We, we have a little bit of money, we can either put that money aside and let it, let it build, because there's other things, like we can always, you know. Help with equip, to pray costs of equipment for the lease or the fire.
Yeah, I feel like you did mention it at one of our meetings that, I don't remember what we were discussing, if we could potentially use CCD for it. It may have been.
I think maybe the fire truck.
Fire truck, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so what you're saying makes sense to me.
And that tax rate is not at the full, like, we can go, that tax rate can go up to five cents per hundred dollars. Um, we tried to do that a couple of years ago and that got shut down, um, so if that's something that you want to do. I will go through the, the work to get it done, it just has to be reestablished by the beginning of May, so. I'll leave that all up to you on your.
Is that something you, you would recommend Karen, or, or since we don't have part of it appropriated now? Cause we're kind of anticipating a oops, something broke or.
Yeah, I think at this point.
Short on equipment or?
I think at this point, we can just let it go, um, the thing is, like, once you. Basically that tax rate just continues to, to go down just a little bit every single year. And then, but, and you used to have to reestablish it every couple of years. Um, so once we reestablish it at five cents, it will stay at five cents going forward, and you don't have to jump through those hoops. I know there's a lot of talk at the, at the state level about changing things up, so I, you know, it's gonna be interesting. Where we'll be next year in discussions as far as property taxes and taxes in general. Um, where we'll be, and I think a lot of things changing, um, with a new governor, regardless of who.
Yeah.
Is, um, so.
He's already making a different type of proposal for property tax, yeah, you're right, I think.
So, we don't know, you know, i- it's one person though, making that proposal, but he's not sort of with legislature, so it may, you know. Um, but I was trying to keep you up to date on that too, so. So, okay, so that's the CCD fund, and then if you can go over to the first fund. Budget, um. Yes.
They have two things, but, one thing I like to ask, do we collect money on rentals for the cove and all the air V S Vs we have?
Money as far as.
Tourism, yeah.
That goes for some, the county, how the county collects it, and then.
They disperse it to us?
No, it goes to Marshall County Tourism Board. And then, it's a whole new board, by the way.
And then it dies?
No, no, then they disseminate it out in way of grants or however they really wanna spend it, as long as it's not tourism activity.
That, are you, you're competing in keepers.
Yeah, there's no direct income to our.
No.
No, no.
It's one of the reasons we argued with the tourism board, because they weren't giving our visitor center very much money, to be honest.
The other thing is, either in your, in your general fund budget, first budget, either put something in to fix the clocks or tear them down. These are terrible, I mean, they got different times, they don't.
Easy, easy.
Take them down or get them picked.
I will, I will let you discuss that with Tom Shaver.
What's that guy do with?
He's the one that.
Well, he originally proposed them and all that, but now it's our responsibility to fix them.
J J Bell, Bell, Bell and Clock is supposed to have been fixing that forever, they came up, they looked at it, they figured out what they needed. He fell under some health issues, so I kind of let up, backed off a little bit. He says he's slowly getting back up the snuff, he's on our radar, I'm getting a quote for this winter to take it clear down and re-spray it, fix it, put it all back. We like that clock.
Yeah, we like.
I agree, it's right twice a day.
Well, which one, there's all spaces and they're all different.
Well, then it's right eight times a day. See ya.
Going back to the clerk's budget, so, um, I know, uh, on salaries. Um, I think I sent an email out, kind of what our thinking was as far as salaries go. I did factor in an increase for the council, as you guys have not taken a, taken an increase in two years, I think. I know it wasn't last, you didn't take one this year, I don't think you did one last year, um, and so I wanted to put at least budget for it. That's a discussion that you all can have, I don't want to make that determination, um. And benefits are just a general thing, legal fees, I did increase that as well.
Can we go back to Stowe?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't read the email yet, which is completely my bad, I saw it pop in before I left, but I was on the phone, um. I just want to make sure that your salary is boosted significantly, because you haven't had. Any major salary increases, and I know, I'd rather put the money you're talking about for council. Toward your salary and Julie's salary, that's my bigger concern.
Yes.
So I'm gonna keep pushing that and advocate for that, whether you want me to or not.
There's a number of issues that we can discuss.
Okay. Okay.
Um, on the legal fees, we did, um, I did increase that, I know Steve is doing a lot of work on the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And that work continues, so I wanted to make sure that we had enough money in there to cover those added expenses. Um, postage has gone around.
No shit.
Well, what, what we used to do was split postage among the different departments. And instead of messing with it, I just put all the postage into my.
Yeah.
It out of my budget and then we just.
Every time you turn around, the post office raises.
It's going up again in January.
Yeah, and you know what, I think it's like every six months.
Yeah, for a, every time you write a grass view, since it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So you gotta be judicious about it.
And, and I almost feel like somehow we maybe, I don't know if we can legally, we should talk to Sean, but like these people who receive the letters. Maybe there's an associated ten dollar fine or admin fee for having to produce the letter.
I was thinking about that as I wrote about six of them.
Yeah, and, and we have a really good hands-on building inspector, so I know there's probably a lot more certified letters that go out. You know, distantly and, you know, and I remember we constantly sending out those certified letters, like, it is costly.
All the grass letters and.
Yeah, and then you also send them usually snail mail because.
You gotta do them both ways.
Some of them won't reject a certified one, at least you can tell the judge, well, we didn't get back the snail.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's how you gotta do it.
Other really the only other thing, um, I may be able to strip some of this money out, but accounting software. I just talked with Anson today and we're gonna get moving on, moving um the accounting software or upgrading it. Um, and so hopefully we can get that done by the end of the year, so that twelve thousand five fifty, it's, it's built into this year's budget as well. I just didn't know where I was gonna come out as far as billing, so um rather than try to remember to encumber it or wherever. Um, but I think with the new, with that new system too, I will have the ability to maybe save on some postage, not the certified letters, but um as far as efficient checks. Um, it has the, the ability to do the A C H payments and more and more companies are asking for that because the mail is just even even with the upgrade in postage, I have a set of checks that people haven't received and it's been a month and you know, they're just sitting somewhere, I don't know where, so it makes us look back because it looks like we didn't issue a check and we did on time, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of where we're at with that.
She's so slumming off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and then dispatch is the county and that's, it's a five percent increase each year.
Just so ironic with that emergency services conversation going on at county, let's just stop it for all the communities.
Sorry. I know I'm being recorded. So I think with, just to give you kind of a general idea of where we're at right now, we're about two hundred thousand dollars in the red for the general, you know, for all of them, and that includes the E M S and the fire. Um, which we've sat down with Marlene ahead already, we met with her, we met with the department heads. And so tomorrow, next meeting should go fairly smoothly because she's already gotten information and, and amenable to a lot of the changes. Um, so hopefully that won't be horrible. Um, again, that number's gonna, gonna come down a little bit too because I'm, I'm waiting on the lit tag, I don't know what that's gonna be and I'm guessing it's, it's gonna be you know, maybe another hundred thousand dollars, so I think we may be about a hundred thousand dollars off, which is really good. I mean, the last couple of years, we've been about three hundred thousand dollars and, but we've come in ahead of it at the end of the day. So between thanks to our department heads who spend judiciously and um property taxes that come with the head or and things.
That's the thing, based on everything you had sent us, I thought if we spent every penny and didn't have a year where they came in under budget, we still wouldn't eat into the last two years of
Right.
surplus appropriated money.
Yeah.
I don't want to call it a surplus, but you know what I mean.
Right, yeah, but again, that money is still going into
Yeah.
Into that general fund and it's sitting there waiting for fire truck, the ambulance, you know, all these big things, so. Um, now that we've got the comprehensive. Um, now that we have a comprehensive plan, I can go to the next step. Yeah, and I want to start putting together spending plans. Um, so that we can, you know, maybe create a couple of funds that say, well, every year, we're gonna take, you know, X percentage of our property taxes and put it into a fund to start putting money away for fire truck or ambulance or some of the big, big ticket items, so that, you know, I'm not gonna be here forever. I mean, I hope I am for a while, but, you know, to make it set up well for the next clerk treasurer coming in that they don't kind of have to scramble and they can say, okay, we already have this money set up, this is where it comes from. So, that's kind of my, I hope in the next couple of years to kind of get that all set up, I mean, buddies. And just continue to be, you know, responsible with town phones and transparent. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I do.
So tomorrow night at five, we'll go through E M S, fire and park. Um, tree commission is going to provide me information. Um, but I talked with Mike this afternoon and they are requesting the same amount of money for the tree commission, which is fifteen thousand. And that comes out of the clerk budget and then I think the visitor center is the same amount as well. And Amber, I told Amber just to come tomorrow night, but she's in prison, so she, so she did that.
Any other question? Karen said a thing, Peter, do you budget like this stack out of your
Correct.
Budget, which is for all departments, is accumulation of a sheriff's department. And Ross kind of hit the nail on the head, that's always been the saying is Freeman's like they're not in this county.
Yeah, they have their own dispatch.
Yeah, they have their own dispatch.
I argue with sheriff that they do use the system, but it's radio, calling on the phone. Uh, messaging, CAD, there's so many ways, you know, but he, of course, he's from Freeman and protects that. Going to these meetings and argue with them, I'm the president of the board. And I argue that now. Gosh, I just got my own video about how patient you are. An example is, if he had his way, he'd be paying twice as much.
Because they're starting to wonder how they're funding it.
Yeah.
Because there's a short, there's a shortage and I don't think the same attitude towards Freeman is, is the same. I've caught just side streaming as much as you.
We decided to do a five percent increase every year, we did that, I think it was three years ago. But next year, we're going to be reevaluating it in January, we have quarterly meetings, uh, January, April, July.
Is there a nine one one, you know, when they get that
Yes.
money from the state or whatever.
They claim it's getting less, hard to imagine all the cell phone.
But that's what they're saying, that they're robbing from other funds as supplement. That's just the word on the street.
They can't get us down here for it.
I just want you to kind of be conscious of that kind of stuff, you know, the battles they go on behind the scenes with the stuff. I don't, I don't expect, like, the limit pays a hundred and some thousands there, share. We pay, I think, eleven and some, and granted, I mean, we can't afford a dispatch.
Twelve thousand one.
By far. But we have to have some kind of a, you know, an agreement, this kind of stuff, but it takes. I mean, this is a public meeting, you can come to it. I've had people come and invited people, it's.
I'd be happy to. Whenever.
And, and the next one, Wayne, let me know and I'll come with you, I'm actually interested in.
I'm looking to next year, they're going to want to probably argue. And the way he estimates how we should charge and the way I estimate how we should charge is two different things, you know, and how, how the whole thing works, you know. And um my thing is what he wants to do is going to get somebody hurt in the long run, you know. Because they're gonna have departments say, don't call in, do this, don't do that out here on the road, you know. But to say you need to prepare yourself, it's just things like that, that's probably gonna come up here in the future and but we save, save a lot compared to what, you know, some people close to that.
So I know there's been a emergency services subcommittee formed by the county, I believe, the county council. And we were not invited to be part of it, Bourbon was not, and Tippecanoe was not, but there's two reps from Argus on it. So you might want to look into it.
Sound it interesting that we worked.
Yes, the redirecting to five percent.
It's got other communities, uh, council.
It also came up during the mayor's meeting with Listen Burger and the town.
Yeah, I mean, they just randomly lucked out some communities and then brought two from Argus in.
Stan had some thoughts on it during that meeting and so did Mark, and I'm kind of surprised to hear what he said today. But nonetheless, there's a conversation happening.
I'm not at all surprised.
I have one thing, I just lost the councils here and I talked to Jenny last night and Kevin. Um, I'd like to um see if we can proclaim Friday as Emperor Call Day. Do a resolution or a proclamation. But got any thoughts? Your last day?
Yeah.
Can you do that, Karen, or?
Yeah.
I mean, you've got a template or whatever.
I got a template sitting in the town manager's pro proclamation. We could do a proclamation for it and I'll do the ride up and Karen can proof it, be the editor. This catches all my mistakes and I trust her. And there's a lot of them. If you don't mind.
Anything else? Let's get you in the meeting.